Meeting begins tonight. We all have an invocation offered by Commissioner Twine, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Lord, we thank you for your grace and mercy. We ask for your Spirit to guide us and lead us tonight, and we ask you for your love. In your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mrs. Cresser, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Lloyd?
Here.
Mr. Waddington?
Here.
Mr. Brady?
Here.
Mr. Murray?
Here.
Mr. Twine?
Here.
Mr. Cool?
Someone care to make a motion to excuse Mr. Cool?
Motion to excuse Mr. Cool.
Second.
Then a motion and second discussion. No objection. Motion be approved. Hearing no objection, the motion is approved. Commissioners, you have before you the minutes of our last meeting, July 9, 2018. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington.
I move that we accept the minutes of the July 9 meeting in the presence of the formal reading.
Second.
Then a motion and second discussion. No objection. Motion be approved. Hearing no objection, the motion is approved. There being no presentations tonight, we turn immediately to the audience participation on any of our regular agenda items. Please step to the microphone, give us your name and address, and share with us your thoughts.
Sharon Johnson, 1139 Fifth Street. I'd like to talk about the $500,000 grant being taken out of the Chesapeake TIF to pay, to give to a developer here in town for downtown remodeling of the buildings. I was a little taken back by this. Usually I watch these proceedings pretty clearly, and this one flew under the table. I was asking about this at the coffee meeting, and I found out that 10% of the Chesapeake TIF money is being allowed for remodeling. I don't know what 10%, what the figure is for the 10%. I'd like to know that when you talk about this. What 10% becomes in a figure amount? I'd like to know how much the Chesapeake TIF is bringing in yearly, and how much of that is going to pay off debt. So, I'm not happy about any more giveaways like this. This is a half a million dollars. And just a few months ago, we gave a million or more to the Fike Building guy out of Chesapeake Grant. I'm not happy about these giveaways, folks. You're running rogue on the giveaways. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Commissioners, City Staff. One question on the consent agenda, which would be Letter D, which is a change order for wayfinding and signage project, time extension only. The public was under the impression that that wayfinding signage program was complete. The question I would have then is, are we moving some signs? Are we adjusting some signs that the public had requested at several coffee meetings and meetings here, that some of the signs are actually in the wrong place? They're directed, actually, some of the signs are past the location, so once you get to that sign, you have to backtrack to get to the location that you're shooting for. The other concern I have, again, is with the Chesapeake TIF grant to H2 Property Management, I believe it's called. Again, if you recall, the Chesapeake TIF was set up to make public improvements in and around the Chesapeake area, which included the Chesapeake TriCor and Keller Building, and then the decision was made in 2016 to expand that TIF area to include private development in downtown, and also the Jackson Street Pier and the Shoreline Drive. Now, we're beginning to hear now that as far as the Jackson Street Pier and Shoreline Drive issue is concerned, that we may not have enough money from the TIF to do that project. We're going to have to find alternative financing for that project, which, again, goes all the way back to maybe just a little bit of the wrong information that was given years ago, because if you go back in history, it's probably in the minutes that it was promised that there would not be any public funds used on either one of those projects. There may be an opportunity here for the City Commission to look into backing away from that Chesapeake TIF and redefine how that Chesapeake TIF is currently being used, and create, back that up to only just public improvements, and then create another TIF in the downtown area to let these types of projects use their own property taxes, to do their own project, instead of relying on the Chesapeake people to finance projects that have nothing to do with their property taxes. And I wish you would maybe consider that. Again, I haven't talked to the Chesapeake folks. I don't know how they feel about it, you know, whether they want to pursue this. I'm just speaking on my own behalf, based on what they were talking about, the Chesapeake folks were talking about at the last meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Swager.
Susie Wise, 105 West Water Street. Tax incremental financing is payments in lieu of taxes, taxes that would normally go to the school system or county. On March 6 of this year, the City Housing Council is required to meet once a year and give a report. They reviewed the community reinvestment area tax abatements. The Chair of this committee is Richard Jeffrey. The minutes from that meeting show that City Personnel Maria Meratori informed the council that the TIF was created in 2004, requiring that all deposits be expensed on certain municipal improvements, including but not limited to land acquisition, relocation, demolition, parks, streets, utilities, public buildings, all intended to promote further development within the TIF. On a motion by Councilmember Peter McGory and a second by Drew Meredith, Chairman Jeffrey asked what the purpose of the TIF was. Eric Woobser stated that the TIF is proposed to be used for Shoreline Drive and Jackson Street Pier projects. Chairman Jeffrey encouraged the city to look to assist the county with projects. The minutes from that meeting were sent from Mr. Jeffrey to the city on March 15. On March 16, an extensive letter from Maria Meratori was sent to Eric Woobser detailing the need for legislation to give $1.3 million of the Chesapeake TIF to Maris Brothers to develop the Fike Building. On March 23, the minutes from this tax abatement committee were approved by the City Commission in emergency legislation, although the report to the state wasn't due till September. At the same meeting, Maris Brothers was given $1.3 million of Chesapeake TIF money. Regarding that gift, from the minutes of the March 23 meeting, end quotes, Dennis Murray said, "Some people get concerned about these investments being made by the city, but this does not come from dollars which could potentially fund police, fire, or street improvements. Rather, these funds are specifically set aside for these types of investments, particularly TIF." That would not be what the testimony to the Tax Abatement Council was testified to just earlier in the month. In 2016, the second urban renewal area was instituted in the city of Sandusky, and it was enlarged based on the fact that a study was done which showed the poor conditions of sidewalks, roads, and infrastructure, particularly water and sewer lines, that had reached the end of their useful life, and it was warned that if those weren't taken care of, breaks could happen and disrupt the business downtown. And we've already seen that happen this summer, where a water line broke and business was disrupted. The deception at a public meeting to a review committee in which a lawyer, a hospital administrator, and the county auditor were, and the lack of transparency by city officials regarding the TIF money raises questions about the legitimacy of the spending. The use of liberal emergency legislation by this city commission is without merit. We appear to be mortgaging our future by committing TIF funds for a number of years to private for-profit developers without regard for the need for public improvement. The bill for this public infrastructure is going to come due, and the money from this was really intended to be used to improve the public infrastructure. I don't know how much of the future TIF funds are already committed, because we're not really being transparent about all these things. You know, I know that you all believe the redo of these buildings is critically important, and that may be. The question is, could they be done with less public money going to a private developer? You know, was this the minimum we had to spend to leverage that amount of money to get these projects done? Were negotiations, was the city tough in their negotiations with these private developers to lessen the public input? I don't know. You know, the bill's going to come due for the infrastructure. And really, the TIF money, I understand, it's basically like it all goes into the city pot. If you guys are really sure this is what you should do, then don't be deceptive at a meeting. Stand up and say, "Look, we are not going to get these buildings done if we don't contribute $2 million of public tax money, and we're sure this is the right thing, and that's what we're going to do." You may be right. I hope it's wildly successful. The drawings for the buildings look great. Just make sure you're doing exactly what you can for the public and their tax dollars.
Thank you, Doctor.
A gentle reminder, some folks here are new. There is a three-minute limit on this period of the meeting in terms of individual comments.
Bob Greerden, 401 West Shoreline Drive. It's Chesapeake. Here to urge your no vote on this Item 1 about using the Chesapeake TIF money for the Cook Building. As our previous speakers already talked about, the primary use of this TIF money is supposed to be public infrastructure improvements, and the number-one item on the State of Ohio website about a TIF is traditional government projects, roads, water, and sewer lines, stormwater, et cetera. As she mentioned, we've already had a water line break in West Water Street there next to the State Theater this summer. From what I've heard from some previous Commissioners, that line is over 100 years old, certainly something that needs to be replaced. We also have a sign in our parking lot at the Chesapeake instructing everyone to stay out of the water down around the Chesapeake because of the storm overflow situation where Ross Suich may be dumped into Sandusky Bay when we have heavy rains. Certainly two projects that could use the $500,000 that you all want to give to the Cook Building renovation. So, to me, those are more important than spending $500,000 for a private developer who bought these properties on his own, as far as I know. I don't think anybody, you know, bent his arm and said, "Hey, you got to come buy the Cook Building to help us out here in Sandusky." He did this on his own free will and accord. He should have plenty of money to take care of the investment that he made to bring his buildings to do the projects that he wants to do. Why are we using city funds that can be used for traditional government projects, roads, water, sewer lines, et cetera? Doesn't make any sense to me. Let the multimillionaire take care of his own business. That's my feeling. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Greerden. Others wishing to address the Commission on any agenda items. If not, then would someone care to make a motion to accept the communications from staff?
No move.
Second.
Then a motion and second discussion. No objection. Motion be approved. In hearing no objection, the motion is approved. Commissioners, we turn to the consent agenda items. Anyone wishing to address, to remove any of those and place them on the regular agenda. If not, then, Mrs. Cresser, would you present the consent agenda, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Item A is approval to request reimbursement from the Erie County Solid Waste Management District for citywide cleanup and yard waste drop-off events. Item B is the second budget amendment for calendar year 2018. Item C is for disposal of two vehicles from the police department's fleet. Item D is a change order with Ellet Neon Sales and Service Incorporated for the Wayfinding and Signage Project that is a time extension only. Item E is authorization to accept bids for the Cedar Point Water Main Improvement Project, and Item F is a transfer of a liquor permit from Lucco West Bar and Grill to Benny Vito's Grill and Bar at 902 West Adams Street.
Commissioners, having heard the various consent agenda items, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Lloyd.
I move that we accept the consent agenda and declaring that all ordinances and/or resolutions A through E, as drafted and presented to the City Commission, under the consent agenda shall take effect in accordance with Section reflected in the ordinances and/or resolutions A through F, actually, whether it be in accordance with Section 13 or 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Then a motion and second discussion. Mr. Klein, could you briefly address the question that was asked about the time extension for the signage? I think that was, if I remember what I read in the materials correctly, it was to respond to some changes that the city already requested and have already been completed.
Yes, sir. That's exactly it.
Okay. Thank you. Mrs. Cresser, would you call the Commissioners on the motion, please?
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Now on the ordinances and resolutions.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Those items are adopted. Item number one, please.
Item number one is a resolution approving the city's intent to invest in the Cook Complex project relating to the redevelopment of the Cook Building located at 160 Columbus Avenue, 119 East Market Street, and the Huntley Building located at 133 East Market Street by granting funds in the amount of $500,000 to H2 Property Management LLC, using proceeds from the Chesapeake TIF fund, and declaring that this resolution shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington.
I move for the adoption of this resolution under suspension, reasons for section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Then a motion and second discussion. Slasko, I understand you have a PowerPoint presentation to make.
Yes, Mr. President. Members of the Commission, folks in the audience, I believe there should be hard copy presentations for the Commission. If you don't have them, they should be in front of you, and then the public presentation will be up on the four screens. Just as a little bit of background, this is not yet a grant agreement being brought to the Commission. As similar to the second meeting in April, what is being considered is a resolution for the intention to invest. Both of those projects, assuming this is approved this evening, will have to come back to Commission to review an actual formal grant agreement, at which time the developers would be closing in on their financing for the projects. Just as a little bit of background, as mentioned, the request is being made by H2 Property Management, which are owned 50/50% by Rick and Megan Hoagriffy, which I think most of us are very well aware about, their building purchases and their significant investments in and around the downtown and Sandusky in general. They currently own 11 buildings in downtown Sandusky and two buildings in Bayview. They've traditionally owned and redeveloped a combination of mixed-use buildings, multifamily apartments, and commercial structures. They've got a significant track record already that has been displayed and is evidence about their ability to undertake substantial and historically appropriate rehabilitation projects. And they also do have a fully-staffed property management team in place, and they've also developed an allegiance with Jeff Foster, who is their architect on the majority of their projects, who is very well respected in property redevelopment and historic preservation. Quick background, some of the more visible projects that are underway or that they've completed. This is the Schmidt Building, which is just east of the Value City Building on East Market Street. This is a $3 million renovation, which is being undertaken and should be completed this fall, which will bring eight new apartments to downtown and three new revamped commercial retail spaces on the ground floor. This is being done historically appropriately, and will also be utilizing federal historic cash credits in that project. Just another visible one that was recently completed, although not to a grand scale. This is about a $250,000 to $300,000 redevelopment or refurbishment of 225 West Water Street, which most noticeably is the full replacement with historically appropriate windows on all the facades of the building. So, to delve into the project that's in front of the Commission at the moment, it's a combination of three buildings. They're located at 160 Columbus, 119 East Market, and also 133 East Market. These sort of together collectively by the owners are being called and termed what's known as the Cook Complex. This project in total is about $1 million in acquisition and $7.6 million in rehabilitation being undertaken to all three of the buildings. This is going to bring back to market anywhere between 35,000 and 50,000 square feet of leasable space, and that is a combination of all the retail spaces on Columbus, second-story offices on the Cook Building, and a combination of retail spaces within the Huntley Building itself. The red brick building on the upper right picture, the third building, which is 119 East Market, is actually going to be converted into a new lobby, elevator, and stairwell that will service all three buildings, which currently do not have AD accessibility or an elevator. So, that'll sort of be the new entrance into the Cook Complex. Just to sort of reiterate again, on a minimum, it's going to bring 35,000 square feet of retail and commercial space back to the market. This does not include the third story of the Cook Building, which could add to that square footage calculation. It does not include the middle building either, and as we're looking, it could be anywhere between 15 to 20 new retail spaces and commercial offices that are completely rehabilitated, being brought back to market in downtown. This may be a little hard to see for the public, but this is just an outline of the floor plans that are currently being considered for the complex. The ground floor of the Cook Building would be proposed to basically remain the same in terms of tenant spaces and square footage. The second story of the Cook Building, although, which is the right-hand picture, shows several leasable spaces which have the ability to be combined into larger spaces as needed by potential tenants. This is a rendering of what the Huntley Building could look like. What's being proposed in the Huntley Building specifically is more of an open-air, bizarre market where the retail spaces are a little bit broken up. Not every space is on the ground floor, on the street level, and what that will allow the project to do is bring spaces to market at a very affordable rate, even though the project is being done to a very high level in terms of rehabilitation, and the tenants will be able to make use of common areas and shared spaces to help depress those lease rates upon completion of the project. This is just another rendering of what the Cook Complex could be done at the end of renovation, and this goes over basically the currently outlined investment into the project. Again, this is a subject to change, as we all know with these old buildings, as we peel back the walls and the numbers could change, but basically, an $8.5 million investment, including acquisition, the city would be proposing to participate to the tune of half a million dollars, which is 5.8% of the project. This is traditionally less than what we have invested in similar projects all throughout the city where we've typically been in and around 10% of investment into the project. What I also think is important is this is merely an intent to invest at the moment, not an actual grant agreement, and why that is terribly important is this project is going to be applying for state and federal historic cash credits in September, and for the project to be much more competitive at the state level, the state likes to see significant financial contribution at the local level. Things like tax abatement and letters of support are helpful, but to max out what you can score and secure in your application, there actually needs to be a financial contribution locally. Again, why this is only an intent to invest is this investment is conditioned on several things. The city's ability to basically monetize through the sale of bonds, the city's investment into the project, which is how TIF proceeds are utilized all throughout the city, and we've got a target completion date for the project, assuming awarded cash credits in September, or the end of December 2020. And I do want to mention, although the funds being used for this project are not our traditional economic development funds, which would go in front of the Economic Development Incentive Committee, we did bring the project to committee on July 10 for their review, and they did unanimously recommend to the Commission and support the consideration of this intention to invest on the city's behalf. With that, I know the city manager may want to weigh in a little bit, and I know Jeff Foster is here on behalf of the property owners, in case there's any questions for him as well.
Sure, I can just speak briefly through the Commission President. First of all, I just want to speak a little bit to the transparency of this process. In the 2015 Bicentennial Vision Plan, there's a specific recommendation to create a program to fill vacant buildings in downtown Sandusky as part of the economic development section of that plan. 2,000 people contributed their voice to that process, and then I'm reading the Sandusky Register from 2016, the 2016 State of the City, which took place in March of 2017, and this is an article from the Register as part of several initiatives that were announced then, upgrading vacant buildings. During the next five years, city officials plan on committing $3 million in public funds toward the redevelopment and reactivation of upper floors and underused buildings for potential office housing and hospitality options. Some structures potentially qualifying for these funds would include the Cook, Fike, and Whitworth Buildings, along with several others. And so, I just want to make sure that we have spoken publicly, and often, in fact, the Fike Building was the first project to actually go through to utilize these funds as it relates to setting aside public dollars for these funds. We know some people are paying attention now, more so than they were later, and we'll do our best to continue to add people to the conversation as we go, but we do believe we have tried to be as transparent as possible, and the reason that these funds were created is because we believe that one of the things holding back our ability to have sustainable tax dollars were over a dozen vacant buildings in downtown Sandusky at the time of the passage of the Bicentennial Vision Plan, and ultimately, we're excited to say that 12 vacant buildings will no longer be vacant or no longer vacant because of the creation of these programs from the building that Lake Erie Shores and Islands is going to occupy downtown, to the Window Building, to Hotel Kilborn, to the Schmidt Building, which Matt mentioned, to the three buildings that are being revitalized by our City Hall Project, to the Fike Building, to the Cook Complex, the Huntley Building, the building that Barra is, and there are several others. And so, we do feel that we have negotiated as well as possible as it relates to only putting the amount of public dollars into these projects that are absolutely necessary to get the buildings done. One of the things that I've learned in over a dozen years of doing economic development is the way that you test whether or not you're putting enough in is how much activity was happening before your programs existed and how much activity is happening when you create the programs. I think it is pretty safe to say that before we created these programs, those vacant buildings were just sitting there. In fact, of the Chesapeake TIF, over $500,000 had to be invested to demolish the Keller Building, because there was not a market solution for that building. We're now able to put those public dollars, not into demolition, but into the revitalization of these buildings in a way that brings more jobs, more residents, and more investment into our city, and will contribute for years to come to the general tax rolls, as well as to things like tax increment financing. So, all that being said, we don't take lightly any investment, and I want to speak a little bit to the Chesapeake TIF itself, because while it is true that I believe 1.8 million of that fund has been dedicated towards revitalization of the Fike, and if the Commission chooses so tonight, the revitalization of the Cook Building, it's also true that we are preparing to spend $8.7 million for that fund for the complete reconstruction of Shoreline Drive, including the burial of the utilities at the Chesapeake, as well as the reconstruction of the pier, which will add to a series of public infrastructure investments that were made in the transit train and the boardwalk around that, as well as the demolition of the Keller. So, we do think that we have taken the investment that the Chesapeake has been making very seriously, but ultimately, we believe that this program, which is one small piece of that overall pot of dollars, is a critical part, including the redevelopment of infrastructure, to a more vibrant downtown that can ultimately improve the climate, not only at the Chesapeake, but throughout the entire city. And we have followed very closely, and in fact, since this wave of investment has been taking place in the downtown, Chesapeake units are selling much more quickly and at much higher prices than they were just a few years ago. So, we know that there's always room for disagreement, and believe me, we don't want to put any more resources into any project than is absolutely necessary, because we want to see more projects happen, and we know we have a lot of infrastructure needs. But this is part of a long-thought-out, transparent process in which we made a lot of key decisions about how to invest limited dollars in the way that we thought in its totality would allow us to make investments in our infrastructure and private redevelopment that put the city in a better position as we had in our bicentennial and beyond the bicentennial. I do want to say that we have an exciting opportunity, because the Hoagriffys are unique in their use of this, and I'll just say, Matt and I have toured the Cook Building probably five or six times before it was purchased by the Hoagriffys. It is very likely the hardest-to-redevelop building in downtown Sandusky. Several folks passed on that property. Ultimately, the Hoagriffys came in, and the return on their investment, even with our grants and potential tax credits for that project, is probably not what the market would normally yield. They're doing that project in large part because they believe in the city, they believe in downtown, and that is a long- in downtown, and that is a long-term investment, and I've heard Greg refer to it almost as a gift to the city to take that on, but it is not an easy building to redevelop. Its floor plans do not lend themselves easily to the same type of residential conversions that you would also see. But one thing that we want to talk about tonight, and we have some partners in the room that can help us talk about that tonight, is the Hogographies, because they know that this is a big investment, they know it's the center of downtown, they want to make sure that some of these resources, while absolutely necessary to redeveloping the Cook, also help us to attract new retail tenants into downtown, which we think is another critical piece, and is also mentioned in our strategic plan, is something that is missing and is necessary. So, they are going to create a rent reduction program for the first three years after the redevelopment of the Cook and in some of these other buildings, in which tenants who sign leases for that will step up into their rent to a market-rate rent over the course of three years, so they have discounted, and also put that directly into tenant improvements so they can offset the cost of new businesses moving into the city, which will create jobs in the city, and then hopefully, by virtue of folks coming in at the same time, make sure, just like a new mall would announce several tenants at a time, bringing multiple tenants into downtown at once will make it more likely that each of those tenants has a chance to be successful. And so, the Erie County Chamber is represented by its director Pamela Smith tonight. We have two representatives from ECHADEC who are here tonight. Dawn Weinhardt from Lake Erie Shores and Islands is here, and also, the Sandusky Register has signed on to that retail initiative as a marketing partner to provide some advertising support for the businesses that come in on a pro bono basis, and so, we really do believe that what the Hogographies are doing ultimately is saving several buildings, maybe some of the toughest-to-save buildings in Sandusky, and that while we are putting public resources into that project, we also believe that they're absolutely necessary to those projects' success, and that a lot of community partners who focus on a day-to-day basis on economic development are here stating that they know this is a good investment, and ultimately, they want to provide their support so that we can improve the retail climate and bring a lot of new businesses into the city. So, that's what I would offer.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Whoopsir. Commissioners, questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman.
I've looked at this Cook Building for probably the last two decades, and I've always viewed it as an anvil around our neck, and the fact that we have a developer, and I think it's a stretch, perhaps, to call Hoger's a developer in this particular instance, I think they're a philanthropist. I think that their ability to take on this renovation is a one-of-a-kind opportunity. We're not setting a precedent here today in what we're doing. We've used these dollars and this method before. This is leveraged in its purest form. This leverages our dollars into revitalizing what is in the heart of downtown. I'd not be more supportive of this and more thankful that these people have landed in Sandusky.
One thing I look at is, I'm welcoming development, investment to the city of Sandusky and downtown and throughout the area. It's a welcome and needed thing, especially when they've come in to invest in probably 11 properties, so it's a very good thing. The one thing that I caution on is the amount of money from the public expenditure to go into any project without enough time to really vet that, and that's the one thing that slows me down, and looking at a half million dollars going into this type of project, so for that, today, at least today as I see it, I'd have to vote no.
Any questions or comments?
So, as an older community, as a legacy community, we also have a lot of legacy challenges. The Cook Building is one that I figured we were going to have to tear down. It would be, it cost us a half million dollars to tear down the Keller Building. We spent a lot more than that to tear down the Cook Building because of all its attachments to other buildings. So, instead of spending that money, really wasting that money, we spent so much money on demolition in the city. Just think about how much money we'd have to spend to tear down a lot of these old buildings. We spent $700,000-something just on American Crayon, we just finished that up. The Apex Building was another fortune. We have spent millions of dollars taking down old houses, and this is an opportunity to leverage $8 million of outside investment instead of just having nothing to show for $500,000 and then having a hole in the middle of downtown. We do need retail downtown, and this is an opportunity to provide for retail investors to come in and have a place that, with the rent support program that Mr. Whoopsir spoke to, is something that is affordable and allows other folks to come in and build on that. There were some good questions asked about other needs that the city has and other investments that we have made and need to continue making in areas around the city. One of the important points that the gentleman raised was regarding the combined sewer overflows, but there are strict limits on where this money can be spent, and what I stated before, and it is still correct, this TIF money cannot be spent on fire, cannot be spent on police, cannot be spent on the wastewater treatment plant, which is the primary way that we address CSOs. All of those are improper. This money has to be spent in the area that is defined in the legislation that was referenced by several folks earlier in the evening. It is not something we can simply pour into the general fund. I know it seems sometimes as though all this money washes through one pot, but the legislature has established very strict limits for good reasons, not initially apparent, for why this money has to be spent in a certain way, in a certain place, and often at a certain time. So, I'm convinced that this is an appropriate investment on the city's part. It's not an appropriate investment on the Hoger's part. They aren't getting near the required market rate of return. They're doing this, as others have indicated, for other reasons entirely, and I do think it's appropriate to look at this as somewhat philanthropy, or a very, very, very long-term You know, I think when we take a look at the tax credits that the city's been able to garner and the number of buildings that we have been able to rehabilitate as opposed to tear down, a couple of things come to mind. We don't need to go very far to look at communities that are in short driving distance, who have legacy buildings that are falling down. They don't have investors coming to invest in them and repair them. They don't have the vitality, they're losing their community identities because they're getting hauled out in the center. That's happening in community after community in northern Ohio. We are very lucky to have the resources that we have, we are very lucky to have the partners that we have, and to have staff that is imaginative and creative and looking at ways to take what in many communities are simply liabilities and turn them into assets that do produce jobs, that do produce income tax revenues into the foreseeable future. And particularly with respect to the tax credits, it's an opportunity to get our tax dollars back. These are tax dollars that otherwise go to the state and federal government, and this is a way to get a very significant return in our investment. The monies that we will invest in this, if the project is successful and it is funded with the tax credits, the monies coming back to our community in the form of construction dollars and investment will significantly exceed the expenditure that we're considering tonight. So, for all of those reasons, I think this is a wise investment, and, well, I guess that's probably enough said, so I do intend to vote in favor of this legislation.
Additional questions or comments? Mrs. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
No.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
And now on the resolution?
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number two, please.
Item two is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Johnson Control Incorporated of Cleveland, Ohio, for professional services for the Transit Center Security Project, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Lloyd.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules and in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second. Then a motion and second discussion. Mr. Freitas, would you tell us a little bit about the legislation we're considering tonight?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President, and members of the commission. It is requested to purchase and install a security system that includes cameras at the Amtrak station and to enter into professional services with Johnson's Control. The police will be able to view these cameras remotely, increasing the overall security at the facility. The total cost of the project is $19,000, with $15,728 coming from the Ohio Transit Preservation Partnership Program grant. These are the final OTPP funds from a grant awarded a few years ago. The remaining $3,272 will be paid through the Transit Capital Replacement Fund, and it is requested that this be passed under Section 14 of the city charter to expedite the installation process.
Thank you, Mr. Freitas. I don't think that you've presented at a commission meeting before, correct?
Nope, this is my first one.
Ms. Freitas is our new transit administrator with a long track record of success in Ottawa County, and we're delighted to have her with the city, so welcome on board.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Commissioners, questions or comments? Mrs. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Now on the ordinance?
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number three, please.
Item three is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to purchase a 2018 Ford F-450 four-by-four regular chassis cab truck with utility service body from Lebanon Ford Commercial of Lebanon, Ohio, through the State of Ohio Department of Administrative Services Cooperative Purchasing Program for the Water Distribution Division, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Fine.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules and in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
Then a motion and second discussion. If not, then, Mrs. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number four, please.
Item number four is an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a license agreement with Gunlock Sheet Metal Works Incorporated to provide for the use of a certain portion of the city's rights-of-way as described in the grant of a license for encroachment for purposes of installing awnings, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington?
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules and in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
Then a motion and second discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Brady.
I'd ask Mr. Klein to give us a very, very, very brief discussion of what this is about. I think it probably belonged on the consent agenda, but I was overruled by that. It's just about some awnings for our friends at Gunlock, is it not?
He's going to answer that shorter than the introduction.
That's a setup.
Through you, Mr. President. These are the typical encroachment agreements when people want to put awnings over their doors, things like that, so typically, it is on the consent agenda. In this case, it's just for their expansion project that they're working.
I did try to put it on the consent agenda, but I was overruled. Additional questions or comments? Thank you, Mr. Klein. Mrs. Cresser, you take responsibility for this not being on the consent agenda. With that in mind, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number five, please.
Item number five is an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a license agreement with Talltown Investments LLC to provide for the use of a certain portion of the city's rights-of-way as described in the grant of a license for encroachment, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules and in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Then a motion and second discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
No, you go, Ms. Lockhart. Or Mr. Brady.
He's the senior commissioner.
Senior, thanks. Mr. Klein, this is a lot more complicated, this one is, so if you can give us a brief description of this one, we appreciate it.
It's fine.
Through you, Mr. President. This one is for an outdoor dining area at Jack's Bar at 123 West Market Street. The fences, or the surrounding is currently up. That was approved via temporary outdoor dining permit, and my understanding is when it went through the Landmark Commission is that it's required to be painted or stained appropriately, so this is something that I know it's already up, but it's a typical permanent installation for something that is there on a temporary basis.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. Commissioners, questions or comments? Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Lockhart, yes.
You know, I don't know if I see a problem with this particular patio, but going forward, I noticed that we've added, over the few years, the last two or three years, we've added quite a few patios, and the questions always come up, or, I want to say, the complaint has come up from ADA and others, the ability to walk around these patios, to maneuver, and as we go forward and there are more businesses, and there's about 35,000 square feet of retail space potentially coming with the Cook Building and others, are there going to be, you know, 10, 20, 30, and 40 patios up downtown? You know, and the uniformity of these patios aren't necessarily, we don't have any regulation or policy for the uniformity of them. You know, some are wrought iron, some are wood, some are, it's a variety of things there, and so, maybe we can take a look at how the patios go, if we have patios at all, and are they too far encroaching so that someone with a wheelchair, a walker, or what have you can get by those? So, I'm just a little bit concerned about the use of patios in the future as we go along, as to how they are.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Lloyd.
I don't know if Ms. Byington would like to give a little description of what our last Landmarks Commission was like, because that was something that was brought up.
Ms. Byington.
Through you, Mr. President. Yes, at the last Landmark Commission, when we reviewed Jack's Bar's patio, two things came up. One was accessibility around the patio enclosures, which we did discuss that and let them know that goes through engineering for the encroachment, ultimately, the city commission, but the second topic was in regard to uniform design for these fences, and although our guidelines technically say that wood is acceptable, they asked us to look further into recommending some standards for the fencing materials and styles in the downtown district. So, that is something that we will be doing and bringing back to the Landmark Commission and then ultimately, the city commission.
And so, conceivably, we could have a patio at every retail place in downtown, conceivably, and that's the one thing that kind of gives me, it's not, that may not be a bad thing, but it's a little bit of concern that if you're walking down in the public walkway, there's a patio, 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 patio on a public sidewalk.
I think it's undeniable that accessibility is hugely important, and that has to be a factor that we look at. I believe it is a factor that we're looking at, so, a good concern. Additional questions or comments? Mrs. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
All right.
I'm in, Chairman.
Did I do the motion and the ordinance?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Lloyd distracted me there. Item number six, please.
Item number six is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a project loan agreement with the Director of the Ohio Public Works Commission for the McCartney Road Reconstruction Project, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Lloyd.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules and in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.[1749.42]
Second.
There's been a motion, second, discussion. Mr. Klein, try again. We had a grant application, almost made it, and then the state came back and said, well, wasn't, the money wasn't all used up, but we'll do a 0% interest loan.
Sure.
And this is for a long-awaited, long-overdue McCartney Road project.
Yes, sir. Mr. President, this is a loan that, or a grant application that we put in last year. The federal, or the fiscal year for Ohio Public Works Commission starts in July, so we just found out earlier this year that a lot of the projects that had closed out last year, when they closed out their books late last year, that not, you know, not grant funding, but loan funding was going to be available in the amount we had previously requested. So they asked us if we would be interested, and we asked them for the terms of it, and it was a 0% loan over the useful life of the project. As many of these projects turn out, the resurfacing project turns into a utility project, so we're moving very heavy down the storm sewer process on that road, and, you know, we will hope to come back later this year for an additional funding opportunity through OWDA. This one in particular is just for the $175,000 20-year payback on a 0% loan from Ohio Public Works Commission, and that, they need that right away so that they can finalize their funding for this next fiscal year.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Klein. Commissioners, questions or comments? Mrs. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number seven, please.
Item number seven is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a design-build contract with Moser Construction Incorporated of Fremont, Ohio, for the wastewater treatment plant, primary digester number four, structural and roof repair project, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Twine?
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Then a motion, second, discussion. Mrs. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Are there any roofs left on the wastewater treatment plant or the water treatment plant that we haven't gotten to yet? The last one. Item number eight, please.
Item number eight is an ordinance authorizing and directing to enter into a residential purchase agreement for the purchase of property located on Mylan Road and identified as parcel numbers 57-05985.002 and 57-01857.000, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Twine?
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Then a motion, second, discussion. But I'm going to ask you, Mr. Lasko, to talk about this very exciting opportunity, but I'll let you explain.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President, members of the commission. As part of the Neighborhood Initiative and Neighborhood Plan that was adopted by this commission about a year, year and a half ago at this point, one of the six neighborhoods that was selected is sort of what we call the South of Kilborn Neighborhood. And each neighborhood had what is being termed sort of an anchor project, a very catalytic visible project that was important to the redevelopment and repositioning of each neighborhood. Particularly for the South of Kilborn Neighborhood, J.C. Park was singled out for significant upgrades to the park facilities itself, but more so than anything was sort of enhanced visibility and accessibility. Particularly that northeastern corner of J.C. Park where you've got sort of the culmination of Baltimore, Finch, and Mylan. Unless you're local, it's very difficult to even know that there is a park there or a park entrance. You've basically got to go southwest down Baltimore to a very undersigned entrance into J.C. Park. So as we've been doing throughout the city, we've sort of been keeping our eyes open and having conversations with particular important pieces of properties in and around city-owned real estate. And it just so happens that recently listed were two parcels of property, although currently under separate ownership. One is a half-acre piece of property that sits behind Mylan Road that basically runs the entire parallel length of Baltimore, just south of Finch and Mylan. That was being marketed together with a single-family house at 1215 Mylan as well, even though they're separate owners. Why that piece of property, again, is so important to us is that it brings visibility up to Mylan Road and Finch, but that is also what's been shown on several maps of potentially being a connector node for a bike path northeastward to the Sandusky Bay pathway. So we're trying to find ways for neighborhoods and parks to tap into the 12-mile Sandusky Bay pathway that's being envisioned. So again, with the half-acre piece of property, also for sale is a 1,200-square-foot house that's three bedrooms, one and a half baths. They were jointly listed for $115,000. What we are bringing to commission for consideration is a purchase agreement for both pieces of property for $87,500. There would be, although the properties are being sold as-is, the city would have till the end of this week, if approved, to do an inspection of the property that would basically allow us to back out if for whatever reason we did not want to move forward with the sale or the purchase, excuse me, of particularly the single-family property. Closing would be set for the first week of August. There's no earnest money being considered as part of this transaction, and the city would be provided a final walkthrough two days before closing to make sure there's not been substantive alterations to the properties. What we also want to do is, the single-family house is basically on a postage stamp lot, which makes it very difficult to be marketed at any time in the future. So what we want to look to do during the term of our ownership is basically do a lot split and consolidation to provide about 10 to 15 feet to the single-family house so that they have room for a patio, potential garage if they so please, which also leaves us significant room still to bring that trail up and increase signage up along Finch and Mylan Road for J.C. Park. But again, candidly, what our intent would be to do after the lot split and consolidation would be to approach commission at some time, probably in August, with a listing agreement to actually list the single-family property for sale so that we can get that off our books while the real estate market is still strong, not just in Sandusky but across the county, to be able to still sell that within the selling season, which is through the remainder of the fall. The budgetary information would be for us to actually sort of bridge this with Neighborhood Initiative dollars, which are a combination of our single-family repair dollars and also our planning and improvement dollars that are through the Planning Department. When we sell the property, sell the house, we're assuming that there's going to be a difference between what we buy it for versus what we sell it for, because we know we're holding back a half-acre piece of property. So whatever that difference is, will be what is ultimately taken out of the Neighborhood Initiative account, and will be viewed as a significant neighborhood investment for and around J.C. Park. In the rare event we are able to sell the property, which actually has been renovated nicely once we had the square footage for more than our purchase price, those net proceeds would go into the Real Estate Development Fund. With that, I'll answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Lasko. Commissioners, questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Brady?
Mr. Lasko, kudos on the price you discounted from the asking price, about 20%, and you did it, I presume, they knew we were a city, which is, always puts us at a disadvantage, I think. So getting that kind of a discount is a terrific job. Thank you.
Additional questions or comments? I think it's hugely important, because as we look to investing hundreds of thousands of dollars into J.C. Park, which is another real jewel, and we think about connecting that to the Mack Iron Trail, this is both exciting and it underscores the importance of long-term planning. You know, we would not, you would not have picked up on the availability of that property and thought that we should think about buying that property if we didn't have in place a long-term strategic plan that called for the redevelopment of J.C. Park, that called for being able to connect that with the Mack Iron Trail all the way down to the waterfront eventually through Warren Street, and also a capital plan spearheaded by Mr. Klein and Ms. Doleway to make sure that those dollars are invested at the appropriate time. So just really good, long-term work, and I think all who are involved.
And if I may, one more thing, I do want to really provide sort of a thanking and kudos to Talon Floor and Director Byington and the Planning Department. As much as we're sort of being the ones in community development to bring the actual listing agreement for commission consideration, one of the things Talon has sort of been tasked with is, you know, keeping an eye on sort of that Neighborhood Initiative plan, our parks and our programs that were identified, and so Talon was actually the one that sort of brought it to our attention sort of the minute the property was ultimately listed. So as much as development is bringing a listing agreement, I think planning and Talon specifically were really instrumental in bringing this to sort of the remainder of the administration's attention.
Well, good for him. Thank you. Additional questions or comments, commissioners? Mrs. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted, and now we turn the meeting over to the city manager for his report. But I do want to start out by acknowledging the tremendous weekend that we had the weekend before last, the Festival of Sale, and all of the wonderful attention, great positive attention that brought to our community. People all over the state and beyond learned about what Sandusky has been doing lately and the successes that we've achieved, and it was just a really exciting weekend. Mr. Wolfser?
Absolutely. Thanks, commission president, commission, audience and staff. I want to echo Dennis' comments, and I have some stats on the Festival of Sale. It really was a tremendous weekend and a really wonderful halfway point for the bicentennial celebration with more to come. I want to just specifically thank the bicentennial commission, Draw Events, who is a production partner of the Sandusky State Theater, who help book all the talent for the free evening shows, and then we have in the audience tonight, our bicentennial coordinator, Mackenzie Spriggs. If we could give her a round of applause.
Halfway there, so I don't know what we're going to do with you come January, but we'll figure something out, so, just kidding. Don't worry. But so, Mackenzie did get me some stats today from the event promoters, which I thought was really great. They said that coverage for the event spanned from the Sandusky Register and Mix 1027 locally to the Weather Channel nationally, and every channel, I think in Cleveland and Toledo, had eyes on Sandusky last weekend, and it was really positive news. And of course, it oftentimes started with the duck, but then it talked a little bit more about the revitalization of the city and even things like the Cedar Point Sports Center. I saw it get rolled into segments as part of the bicentennial. A lot of my old friends from Cleveland reached out and said, I feel like Sandusky is everywhere, and that's exactly what we wanted the bicentennial to accomplish, and I think it helped to introduce a lot of people to this market who may have been here for an island or Cedar Point in the past, but now know that there's a really wonderful historic downtown as well. We did a survey, oh, just the numbers for that, the event coverage reached over 10 million people by traditional means and 15-plus million via the web with all those direct hits. So, you know, that's putting Sandusky out there for a lot of people who can hopefully be converted to visitors and be a part of everything that's happening here. Mackenzie, working with some folks in our GIS department as well as in planning, did a survey of local merchants. 88% of respondents said that their business was at least average too far above average, and 76% of those said it was above or far above average for a specific weekend. Also, 88% of businesses surveyed said that they preferred this event site on the pier to other event sites we've done in the past with the ability, because it kept local streets open to the extent possible. And we know that the jet was full, and yet I didn't get a lot of complaints about parking management during the weekend either, but the jet was running two boats all weekend, and the good time was jamming, so we were able to accommodate the increased traffic, which was substantial, because over 30,000 people attended the actual daytime festival, and we know that there were thousands more for the evening festival, and I think this is exciting. 100% of the businesses surveyed reported that the customer's impression of Sandusky was either good or outstanding during the event. I know anybody who spent time down there, I know one of our detectives, Gary Witchman, who worked almost the entire weekend, every time I was there, I saw him, said that he was talking to people from out of town, and that people were blown away by Sandusky, and that they ranged from Pennsylvania and Indiana and Michigan and other states, and so I think a lot of them were really surprised by what they found, and we'll be back. So thank you to all who are involved, and we'll keep pushing those types of events, and hopefully have a great rest of the year for the bicentennial. Moving on to the Police Department, another very popular event. The Fifth Annual Touch a Truck Event will take place at the Paper District Marina, 611 West Shoreline Drive on August 7th, from 4:00 p.m. until 8:00 p.m. We look forward to another exciting year for children to enjoy climbing walls, getting inside of safety vehicles, bounce houses, and ultimately just having a chance to interact with safety professionals and others who they see doing work every day. So we hope to see a lot of people there and in more big crowds. For Public Works, we're requesting approval for Strand and Associates to submit a grant application to the National Recreation and Park Association through the Great Urban Parks Campaign for Green Infrastructure and Underserved Communities program. On behalf of the city, if awarded, the total request of $300,000 will be applied toward developing a master plan for J.C. Park, which is included in the five-year capital improvement plan for 2019. This park was highlighted as a key location to implement green infrastructure to reduce overflows from the combined sewer system. Also, the Ohio EPA has implemented new rules expanding the public notification plan implemented by the wastewater treatment plant regarding sewer overflow events. The plan is still being developed and will be implemented in 2019, and the Division of Streets and Traffic successfully completed mill and fill improvements to Warren Street between Washington and Jefferson Streets. The traffic pattern has been changed to one way, and signs informing motorists have been installed. I've had a chance just walking to and from work to see, and it does look like a big improvement. Obviously, we know it's a short-term improvement until we can do a larger overhaul of Warren Street, but I know that staff responded as quickly as possible within the resources available to address the concerns that had been brought to this commission's attention a few months ago. Also, with community development, the former Sunoco Station located at 1651 Tiffin Avenue on July 11th, 2018, the city was notified that it successfully secured its second and final no-further-action letter from the Bureau of Underground Storage Tanks. All remediation activities are complete, and the city is moving towards completing the sale of this property, along with the former Hopper's Mobile Home Park, likely to occur in late August or September. The city wants to thank the Ohio Development Services Agency for their contribution of $200,000 in cleanup funds through the abandoned gas station program. And finally, the city wants to thank our consultant, Manik and Smith, who managed the project on behalf of the city. And obviously, this will be an economic development project in which we'll bring a dispensary into the city and hopefully attract more investment, job-creating investment on the west end. For the Planning Department, the Public Art and Culture Commission will be having a public art master plan steering committee meeting on July 31st at 5:30 p.m. in the first-floor conference room, and the regular planning commission meeting that was scheduled for And the regular planning commission meeting that was scheduled for July 18th has been rescheduled to August 2nd at 4:30 p.m. in the first-floor conference room. Also, the regular Board of Zoning Appeals meeting is scheduled for Thursday, August 16th at 4:30 p.m. in the first-floor conference room. And on August 1st, there will be a, this is, you know me well, this is another public art meeting, but it's the next day. I was making sure it wasn't redundant, which has happened. There will be a public meeting at 6:00 p.m. in Washington Park for the public art master plan. The backup rain location will be City Hall, first-floor conference room. Not to be confused with the July 31st meeting of the Public Art Commission that will take place in this room. Now, I think I probably just confused everybody. So that concludes my remarks for this evening. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Wilksir. Commissioners, questions or comments? A shout-out to the Police Department and all the good work that your department and officers did, Chief, in securing the convictions that you reported on last week. It's a long, arduous trail and it's all going to be done right to get those convictions. Just the smallest mistakes can upend all of that, so congratulations. And I do want, Mr. Klein, I guess you get responsibility for this although there are certainly a lot of other people below you. And actually, this may be Ms. Byington. I'm not sure I put these lines mixed up sometime. But that little parklet on Cleveland Road, you know, the old bank ATM spot is just a , oh, who's that? Ms. Byington?
Talon Floor.
Talon Floor again. Why isn't Talon here tonight? That is just a beautiful, I mean, the grass has got to come in, but it's just a beautifully imaginative reuse of a piece of property. It reminds me just a little bit of what we were talking about tonight with the J.C. Park and grabbing the right piece of property at the right time and really making a silk purse out of the house here. So that's really great.
Commissioner, if I could, through Commission President, I think that project is very special in Talon and planning and in Public Works, many have contributed to it. But one thing I would say, it's why I love that project so much, is because the initial plan was actually to demolish the overhead structure, thinking that it would be better to start with a clean slate. And it was actually residents of that neighborhood in a public meeting on this project that suggested perhaps it could be kept. We passed that on to the landscape architects we're working on who actually loved the idea. And I think it's a, what you see there with that roof is much more substantial and iconic, I think, than whatever we'd have been able to afford to replace it. So it really is another example of kind of working with the public to make another project better. So it was really cool.
Additional questions or comments for the City Manager? Not then any items of old business.
Mr. Chairman, I guess this goes back a few years. I dealt with this my second term, but the NASA intake, I'd like to ask either Aaron or the City Manager, where are we at with the NASA water intake pumping facility at Sheldon's? When I researched, looking back, and I talked to a couple of Commissioners about this, looking back, the facility had to be operational no later than the end of 2017. We're in 2018 now. I know there's been some repairs done, but my second term on the commission, we had looked at, we would have to send divers down and have it pressure tested and that's the big question mark because that's a long-distance travel to an N S A facility and then be repumped back to our plant.
Mr. Klein, could you give Mr. Waddington, the Commissioner, an update on that?
Yeah, I guess what I would say, I mean, it's a, it would probably be best if I just gathered some information and brought it back for the next meeting or a future meeting to have some discussion, but that is definitely a process that, yes, there needs to be divers, there needs to be pressure tested, there's a lot of work that needs to be done with the SCADA system and things like that to make it operational for the city to be able to use. In its current state, the city can't use it as a secondary intake in its current condition. So even with the improvements that the county has been doing, we still need additional work. So I can gather some information and bring it back.
Yeah, I mean, that is a lot of work that still has to be accomplished to make that usable. And the whole reason we got into that, just to put it in context, was we were looking at, at the time, at a $7 million bill or so to develop a secondary intake. And we looked at this as an alternative because it would be less expensive if we could utilize the existing infrastructure. But it did have to go through all those steps. If we can't do that, then we need to, again, look at a secondary intake and abandon that particular project. I appreciate what the county's done so far, but it's just a scratch compared to the overall work that needs to be accomplished. So thank you, Mr. Waddington, for highlighting the importance of that project.
I guess my concern was, I read in the paper a few months back that it's operational as far as turning the valve on and water going in, but as far as being pressure-tested and useful for us, there's no way it could come up to capacity.
Well, it'll run a water hose right now, but nothing more than that, so.
Mr. Chairman, I think it's fair to point out, though, that we are not in jeopardy right now, are we, Mr. Klein? Our secondary intake, we spent money to rebuild, to rebuild a secondary intake. It is now, we have now deeper water out there than we've had in a long time. And the city is not in jeopardy regarding losing our primary intake at this point in time.
No, through Mr. President. When we did the project a couple of years ago on our existing secondary intake, we dredged around the intake to make sure that we could gain some depth. I mean, that's obviously something that, over time, the silt and sedimentation comes back in and fills that in, but we do, it's been operating very well. It's been very good improvement and it's bought us quite a bit of time to make sure that we can get that Sheldon's Marsh intake in complete operation as a full-time secondary intake.
Mr. Chairman, one last question, I guess. I'm going back years ago now, but at the NASA intake, I went out there with Commissioners, this is years ago, maybe eight, nine, 10 years ago now. We had went out to the site and also going out into the lake, some of the lineups was misaligned going to the lake, so they would have to be repaired off. So that goes out in some deep water, but that's a big number two. That's why we kind of backed off. The county at the time was looking at doing like a, it was called a micro-system water plant, similar to like brewing coffee. And they were looking at, that was not a threat, but they were looking at that for, to build and use that access. And then we kind of backed off at that time, so.
Additional items of old business? Items of new business?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lockhart.
With, I guess this is something I said before and we just want to mention this real quick. It's about diversity. I've had a few comments from people throughout this year about diversity and inclusion in our staff. And that goes with minorities and women and men being integrated into our staff. So far, I think we're moving that way, but I want to make sure that we're still mindful of that direction to have both minorities and women in positions of authority in our staff. Having, welcoming, I think her name is Director Fritus, in, that's a welcome sign that we're moving in the right direction for inclusiveness because previous to that, you know, most of the female staff are in lower or clerical positions. So it would make me happy that if we move forward and not, you know, it just makes us look like we're sort of behind the times in diversity. But diversity is not just the only thing, it comes with inclusion. And inclusion means that this staff, this government should be reflective of the people that we see in our community. And that being that they have that feeling of inclusion, their ideas, and then I think we're going to have a better flow of things with that. So I want to make sure that we keep that on target as far as we go. And then, if you don't mind, is the intersection of Hancock and, can I respond to that? Forgive me. What is it? The intersection is where we have the Hancock and, I'm blanking out right now. We had a traffic light there. Here and a half, yeah. Here and a half, I forget that. But anyways, some of the residents that were just there, they said that they had a problem with cars screeching and so forth, so they invited me over to observe the traffic. And as I observed the traffic, a lot of people are coming to what you want to call a rolling stop. They're not really stopping and there were screeching tires. And I don't know if it's that we need a light there, but we definitely could use other traffic control devices like crosswalks or, you know, flashing stop signs or something along those lines or even more painted pavement markings. But there's definitely a line-of-sight problem that I can see there. That's something we might want to address here coming forward. I don't know if the manager might.
Mr. Wilksir, if you might ask, Mr. Klein?
I can actually speak to that one. Through the Commission President, starting with the second point, and then I'll work back towards the diversity piece. I know that we looked at the traffic counts for that before we made the decision to go to a four-way stop and ultimately it didn't justify a light. I actually walk by that intersection every single day on my way to and from work or walking to downtown, et cetera. And I don't think it backs up. There may be some sighting issues because there is, it's so spread out, it's pretty wide for where the stops are at and where they go. So I think it probably will take like a finer look from like a planning perspective as to how you might make that visibility better. But the traffic is not the issue, it's not that there's too much traffic there, it really may just be a visibility issue. And so I don't know if we could look at like how we do bump outs or crosswalks or something like that, but I do think that's probably a better and more affordable solution than a traffic light at that intersection. And as to the diversity piece, I agree, we're working hard, we're doing better. I know the cabinet looks better than it did. And I do, I think that one area where I would disagree is, I don't think, I think we have a lot of very strong female staff, much beyond the clerical level. You know, often, you know, Director Byington is a director, but I'd say one level below that. Very many female leaders within the organization and Clerk Cresser, obviously you're a part of being one of them as well, but of course, we always want to be more representative and that includes gender as well as racial diversity and we'll keep working at it. But it is a, I think everybody in HR and every director knows that when we're hiring, we want to be able to hire the best person for every job, but when we look back at the hires that we've made over the course of time, something's wrong if it's not becoming more representative of the community that we serve. So we'll work, we'll continue to work hard at that.
Mr. Wilksir, by the way, did you mean to ask for a motion with respect to Strand and Associates to submit a grant application?
Did I need one? Oh, I probably did, I apologize. So could I ask for a motion for Strand and Associates? It was not worded that way, but I do believe we need one.
Okay, there's been a motion, second discussion. All the favorites signify by saying aye. Aye. Closed. Motion carries. Additional items of new business?
I would like to make a motion for an executive session regarding personnel review of the City Manager.
There's a motion, there's a second.
Second.
Then a motion, second discussion. Cresser, would you poll the Commissioners regarding the executive session?
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Twin?
Yes.
The executive session is set.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Brady, I'm going to guess this is why you're the least popular Commissioner.
Probably right. I should like to make a motion for an additional executive session for personnel review of the Commission Clerk.
There's a motion, there's a motion, and second discussion. Ms. Cresser, would you poll the Commissioners on the motion, please?
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
That executive session is set. Other items of new business? If not, then we will turn to audience participation. Anyone wishing to address any city issues, please step to the microphone and share with us your thoughts, as well as your name and address.
Sharon Johnson, 1139 Fifth Street. On the Chesapeake Tiff, my questions weren't answered on a couple of them here. How much does the Tiff bring in yearly and how much of that yearly amount goes for debt?
Is that, I'll wait until you have all of your comments, Mrs. Cresser, and then I'll ask Mr. Wilksir, or Mrs. Johnson.
Those are the two only questions I have and then I have a comment on another topic.
Okay. Please go ahead.
Okay. My other topic is in regards to the Cook Building and the developer there. What I'm reading in the paper, I believe that, about the involvement with Nikki Lloyd and HoGrief, I think it appears that she's in conflict of interest. That's just a comment I want to make there. So does somebody want to answer my questions on the Chesapeake?
If you're concluded, Mr. Wilksir or Mr. Stoloway?
Last year, it was $632,000 generated.
Is there currently any debt that is being serviced by that?
I believe we, this year and next year, I believe, are the last two years. I'll verify that with you in an email to confirm that, but last year it was about $420,000, the debt service. I expect it to be the same, I'm up for this year and for next year.
For next year, too?
Yeah, I'll send you an email to confirm that. That I don't have with me right away, but I do have the revenue numbers.
I just, you know, I thought it's nice for the public to know that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Anyone else wish, oh, sorry?
Dawn Weinhardt, 1433 Marlboro Street, Sandusky. I'm here representing Lake Erie Shores and Islands and I just want to applaud the City Commission for taking the initiative to look at the project at the Cook Building. We at Lake Erie Shores and Islands support their efforts of bringing in more inventory into our, for our residents and our visitors alike. It falls in line with our mission, which is to grow the region's tourism economy through collaborative promotion, to increase visitor awareness, to make Lake Erie Shores and Islands the ideal place not only to play, but to work and to live. And we believe that when you build a place that people want to visit, you create a place where people want to live. And when you have a place where people want to live, you create an environment in which people will work and open new businesses. And then in turn, you will create a place that people want to visit and we will start the whole circle over again. So we truly believe that. So we applaud your efforts.
Thank you, Ms. Weinhardt. Anyone else wishing to address the Commissioner?
I'm glad you're standing up for what you believe will help Sandusky. Just a small word about Tiff. The first Tiff was in California in 1952. By the 1990s, I believe around 8% of all the property taxes in California went into Tiffs. And so much of it was diverted from the schools and from infrastructure development that the state had to step in. And that was one of the reasons of their huge budget deficit. And when Jerry Brown came into office in 2011, they outlawed Tiffs. So this can be abused and can be overused and we do create a public debt for the infrastructure we don't fix with that money. That money has to come from taxes and somewhere else. So we do like kick the can down the road to pay for this infrastructure later and we need to make sure that there's income available to repair that infrastructure. The other thing I would ask is that I don't think we're utilizing Mr. HoGrief to the full extent. We're getting money and development from him, but you have to look at his story. I mean, this is a small-town boy who had a lot of intelligence, got highly educated, went off, persevered, worked hard, made a ton of money and is very wealthy. Now, we referred to work, live, and play. We got the play down, we're getting the live down, and the work we really want is high-tech, high-paying, good manufacturing jobs. Now, this is a person who was very successful in that endeavor. If we don't have him on every economic development board in this city, in this county, we're crazy. Because what we really want is his mind to think how to bring those businesses and those high-paying, good jobs to Sandusky, Ohio. Because that's what'll fill your apartments and that's what'll keep your economy really going. So I would encourage you for that $500,000 to request a commitment from him to economic development here and good jobs.
Thank you, Doctor. Good points and we will try not to be like California as best we possibly can. Mr. Wilksir?
Through the Commission President, just to respond really briefly, I just want to make note that Mr. HoGrief has absolutely invested in ways other than the real estate investments he's making downtown. He made a large gift to a STEM program at his alma mater at Margarita High School and he's actively working with Bowling Green Firelands, Firelands Hospital, Booter Drug and others to look at how to seed a biotech industry here, particularly for clinical testing, so that is something he's doing. And I actually have followed the California Tiff. It was very, their structure was a lot different than Ohio's and a lot of other states. They actually funded a lot of development authorities and so they were doing a lot of really massive things with ports and other stuff with some of those funds. So it's not necessarily an apples-to-apples comparison, but I do think you're right, we should very selectively use them and only when absolutely critical for a larger goal. So.
Jeff Foster with Pato Architects. I'm actually here tonight in a couple of different hats. I'm representing H2 Properties. I'm their architect on their projects here in town. And I do want to stress, too, that the dollars that the, and as Mr. Lasco and Mr. Wilksir had noted, the dollars that the city would be investing in this do not go towards the construction of the renovation of the Cook Complex, they go towards the tenant aspect of it. And that's in a couple of different forms. It comes as Mr. Lasco and Mr. Wilksir mentioned in a rent reimbursement program, but also tenant improvements, which in layman's terms means the dollars that a business has to put into a building out of their pocket to build it out to their needs, which for a lot of small businesses, you know, we've seen this time and time again in the Cleveland area that when you get into a hot real estate market, you just cannot afford the rent. So what this does is this takes down one of those large obstacles for small entrepreneurs and part of their program, which you'll hear a lot more about as this develops into a formal agreement about how that program is going to work. So I think to the last speaker's point, that's exactly what the aim that Rick and Megan have is to use, the city's investment, not just for renovation of the building, but for development on the economic development side.